Good evening, everybody. Today is Thursday, April 9, 2020. This is the Albernett City Council meeting. It's 7:00 P. M. We're going to go ahead and get started this evening. It's going to be slightly different for not only the council, but the folks that are watching this evening. I think this is probably going to be the first time in history where we're going to call this meeting to order, where we don't have all our council people present and with us here at our chambers in City Hall. A very sad moment in time because of the COVID pandemic, but we're making do with what we have. We're practicing not only our social distancing, but our safe techniques to try to keep not only ourselves, but the public safe. So again, I'm calling this meeting to order. We have our folks that are in with Zoom either dialed in or videoed in, and we'll make all this information available to the public, of course. We've made the availability of connecting to the public, and we'll do our best as we get through this. We'll ask you to bear with us as we do so. Given that, I'll go ahead and waive the pledge of allegiance tonight because I do want to talk a little bit more about the COVID pandemic. I have in my hands an internal report that we use for briefing between not only the members of the government here in Albernett, the council, and our leadership, as well as our employees that are doing everything we can to keep the city of Albernett safe, but also our intern intra agencies and government entities that we're working with. One point that I do want to make is that we have now 1,270 confirmed cases in the state of Iowa. I pray that the cases now are leveling off, but I fear that we will have or continue to have some more before this thing is over. I want to applaud everybody in the city of Albernett for doing a good job of listening to the guidance that was put out from our local leaders all the way up through the governor's office. The one thing I will mention is that on April 6, Governor Reynolds signed an additional proclamation with additional established closures and orders up through April 30. The one thing I'll mention about that is that things like discount stores, grocery stores, pharmacies, essential food and medical supplies are still going to be made available. Other closures such as social gatherings, fraternal clubs, bingo halls, bowling alleys, pool halls, zoos, arcades, amusement parks, libraries, skating rinks, skate parks, outdoor indoor playgrounds, and children's play centers, racetracks, tobacco and vaping stores, gaming instrument and movie stores and campgrounds were closed. Although a lot of the things on this list don't directly affect Albernett, it could affect you and your lives as you move around this area. Additionally, there will be no unsoliciting door-to-door sales. They are prohibited. Are not allowed to consume food or drinks in the outdoor service areas of restaurants or bars. This is still considered part of the establishment. Patrons must consume their food or beverages off-site. That being said, I know some of the other council members probably have comments about not only how well things are going with our support of our businesses and things like that, but just the general conduct of the folks here in Albernett and how much they appreciate that. That completes my comments on the pandemic situation. I'll go ahead and recognize the clerk and ask her to conduct a run call to establish a quorum for the record.
Counselor Menzen? Counselor Menzen?
I'm present.
Counselor Sarison?
Present.
Counselor Shantz?
Present.
Counselor Trump?
Present.
Counselor Bozenberg?
Let the record reflect that we have a full council and a quorum to conduct business for this evening. I would also seek approval of the agenda as submitted. Well, stand by. Do we have any changes? No, no changes, and I'll take an approval. I'm going to call these in order this evening so there's no confusion. Could I get a approval from Councilman Menzen, please?
Aye.
Moved by Menzen. Could I get a second from Sarison?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. It's approved. I'll move on to the sheriff's report. A copy of the sheriff's report has been placed in your packet. Because of the conditions that were under, there will not be a deputy physically present this evening. Sure, you've all had an opportunity to approve, or not to approve it, but to review it. For the record, I'll go ahead and state that the required hours are 43, and they've had 106 hours, 106 hours. There were 18 calls for service, and if any of the public wishes any further information on that, we'll be happy to provide it. Are there any comments by council or concerns concerning the Lynn County Sheriff's Report calls for service this month? Okay, hearing none on that, we'll go ahead and move on to the mayor's report. I'm going to keep it brief to the point to say, I would like to say Happy Easter to everybody early for this weekend. Take care of yourselves. Practice the emergency procedures and health procedures that are in place, but still try to celebrate it as best you can. And given that, I'll go ahead and move on to the reports, starting from what would have normally been left to right. Councilman Menzen, you're recognized.
Nothing from me.
Counselperson Sarison?
Nothing from me.
Councilman Shantz?
Everyone stay healthy.
Councilman Trump?
Nothing.
And Councilman Bozenberg?
Yeah, none.
All right, then we'll move on to citizen comments. I'm going to refer to Mayor Pro Tim Sarison. You're running the Zoom. Do we have any that are dialed in? Do we know?
There do not appear to be any. We have representatives from some of the various agencies we're working with, but no citizens or residents.
Okay, and let the record reflect there are none physically present within City Hall. There are two types of citizen comments. One's for agenda items and one for non-agenda items. For both types, if you have anything that you want to do, state your name clearly for the record and your address, and you'll have up to five minutes to address these. Are there any agenda items anyone wishes to address that are connected? Hearing none, we'll move on to non-agenda items. Are there any non-agenda items? Hearing none, that completes citizen comment section. We'll move on to number nine, which is the written reports. The first one on here is the fire department with Chief Graham. I know you have your report in your packet. You've had an opportunity to review that. We will go ahead and recognize if he believes he wants to address a few items, including some medical instructions. Go ahead, sir.
I just want to say with COVID-19 everything that on all calls, we'll be wearing masks so people see us come into the door. It's not because we think you have it. We're just protecting everybody that we're responding to and us. And then we're doing birthday party, drive-bys, fire trucks, a little parade. We've done a couple in town here. If they want to do it, then contact Andrew at albernettfirefighter1015@gmail.com. And it's for only people in our fire district. We're not going to go outside our district to do this, but it's all I have.
Very good, thank you. Move on to public works. Any comment? I tremble. No comments. City Clerk Danielle, do you have any comment?
No comment.
Very good. All right, then we'll move on to item number 10, approval of the consent agenda. City Clerk, any changes or additions to the consent agenda?
There are two bills that were added, and they should be in the packet. One is a reimbursement request in the amount of $374.20 to the Grahams for the expenses relating to fire school. And Councilmember Shantz has reviewed that invoice. And then the second invoice added to is from Dave's Service in the amount of $53.50.
Councilmember Shantz, any comments on that?
Aye.
All right, very good. Other than those changes, did I get a motion from Councilman Shantz to approve the consent agenda as amended?
Don't move.
Get a second from Councilman Trump?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries, thank you. We'll move on to item 11, which is new business. This is a resolution awarding the general obligation corporate purpose bonds series 2020. I believe that we should have Maggie Berger with Spear on the connection, and we'll recognize her if she's here.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I am here. This is Maggie Berger with Spear Financial. I can see all of your faces. So this morning, we did take bids on the $900,000 of general obligation corporate purpose bonds. And I apologize, I'm looking at my other screen while I'm talking to you because I'm used to standing there with my paperwork in my hand. So we did take bids on the fire station. It was a $900,000 borrowing. We did have four bids come in, and we will be recommending this evening that you will accept the bid from UMB Bank of Kansas City, Missouri at an interest rate of 2.3336%. I do want to point out that when we started this conversation, which was close to a year ago, we were somewhere thinking these interest rates on 15-year bonds would be in the 3.25% to 3.5% range. We have watched those interest rates come down. Three weeks ago, we would have been in the 3% range again. So we did kind of gauge the market, and we're making sure that we were going to be back in. We have watched the benchmarks on 15-year bonds be right in the neighborhood of about 2.3% to 2.5%. And so we're very happy with today's results. We think that it is an acceptable bid and should be accepted by this city based on how low those interest rates are. I do want to point out that UMB Bank did have Farmers State Bank of Albernett participating with them, which means we don't know the exact amount that Farmer State Bank will be buying out of the deal, but they were interested and did coordinate with the winning underwriter to purchase at least some of these bonds, which is always, we love to see that because that just shows that local participation. The interest rates on your new bonds are going to range from a 1.6 at the beginning of the bond issue down to a 3% towards the end of the bond issue. We did protect the city with a call feature. So after June 1 of 2027, if interest rates are lower at that time, then you would be able to refinance. At that time, you'd also be able to pay the bonds in whole or in part. So if you had some money ahead at that time, you'd be able to pay part of them off or all of the issuance off. So with that, I'd answer any questions that you do have, but we would recommend that you would award tonight's resolution.
My only comments would be I couldn't be happier with the fire station project, your performance, or the fact that Farmer State Bank is involved with the process. Thank you. From right to left this time, any comments? Councilman Bozenberg?
No, nope.
Councilman Trump?
No.
Councilman Shantz?
No.
Counselperson Sarison?
Just a thank you, Maggie. We appreciate it.
And Councilman Menzen?
Same, thank you, Maggie. Appreciate it.
All right, very good. Any other comments, Maggie?
No, we will be asking you, I think, to have a meeting in about two weeks period. I think that was already on your timeline. To meet again in two weeks, you can do it obviously electronically. It would just be one agenda item from bond council, but it is just kind of the normal process that tonight you award, you lock everything in. Bond council fills in all of the blanks, and at that time, in two weeks, you kind of sign off all on the rest of the documents, and then about two weeks after that, you'll get your money. So you'll have your money in just about a month.
Danielle, can you set up for a special meeting for the two weeks, and then in the next two weeks, that should be our next council meeting?
Yeah, and you won't need to meet the day you get your money. A month from now, you won't have to have a physical meeting for that date. It'll just be two weeks from today that we need to have you have a physical meeting.
We'll get a special meeting in two weeks for them. Danielle can coordinate that with you.
Perfect, thank you.
Very good. All right, well, if there's no other questions for Maggie, then we'll go ahead and move on to item B. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry. We better do the resolution about that. All right, so let me pull the resolution here. Trying to get ahead of, see, we get the money, and I just get ahead of myself and start moving. All right, the resolution is 04-2020-01, a resolution awarding general obligation corporate purpose bonds series 2020. This is the amount is for the...
Should be 900,000.
Yeah, it says not to exceed 1,200, but it's for the 900,000. Okay, correct. All right, very good. I think we're up to, back-to-back, Menzen. Can I get a motion by? No, I can't do it that way. We're going to do that by run call. So I'll need the motion from Menzen for the resolution 04202001, please.
So moved.
And a second by Sarison?
Second.
All right, very good. And then if there's any other discussion? Danielle, would you call the roll on that, please?
Counselor Menzen?
Aye.
Counselor Sarison?
Aye.
Counselor Shantz?
Aye.
Counselor Trump?
Aye.
Counselor Bozenberg?
Aye.
Very good. The record reflects the past unanimously. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I will log off of your meeting now.
Very good, thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, Maggie.
Thank you, bye-bye.
All right, get that signed and processed. Now we'll move on to our liquor licenses. The first liquor license is for the clinic. This is an initial. It's in your packet. I'm sure you've had an opportunity to review it. I don't have any questions on it. Does any of the council folks have a question on this? Or Danielle, I was going to ask something.
We had a couple of questions about the expiration date. Since it is an initial application and not a renewal, the expiration date isn't set on that, and that's why that date shows up in there. I did confirm with the Iowa Alcohol Beverage Division that that is correct.
Council, any questions or concerns with the initial liquor license for the clinic? If you can do the approval with a simple motion. If there's no questions on this, we move on to a motion by Councilman Shantz.
Don't move.
And can I get a second from Councilman Trump?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. All right, then we'll move on to our next license, which is the liquor license for Fuller's. It's also in your packet. An opportunity to review that before we move forward here. Any comments, Danielle, for the Fuller's? Okay, any from council on this? An opportunity to review it? All right, very good. Hearing none on that, then we'll go ahead and move to... Trump, would you give me a motion for approval, please?
Don't move.
Can I get a second from Councilman Bozenberg?
So move.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor for the approval of Fuller's liquor license, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That motion carries also. We'll get the profit. All right, very good. All right, then we'll move on to item D, which is MSA's Discuss Housing Strategy and Funding Application. This information is also in your packet. This is a continuation of discussion that we had from last month. We'll go ahead and recognize MSA. I'm not sure who's in from MSA, but I hope somebody is.
Yep, Jim Holtz with MSA Professional Services. Good evening. So some changes since we last talked. I have talked with the Iowa Economic Development Authority about their program. They have a grant program for housing assessments. It's a $10,000 grant with a $5,000 match. And I've also talked with Alliant directly and talked to them about a $5,000 award from them for the joint, the three communities jointly doing the housing plan. Talking with the Iowa Economic Development Authority, I talked to them first about the fact that we were looking at a joint application. They suggested that we actually have each community apply separately, which gets us more money. And so that's, and so the program requires that you contract with Iowa State Extension to do three, a round of three public meetings or meetings with the steering committee. One for education, one for input, and one for some action planning. So that $5,000 match covers their contract. So that's all that the city would have to come up with for the total joint housing needs assessment and implementation strategy. Met with the city of Central City last night, and they approved just moving forward submitting the grant application. It doesn't, it doesn't commit them to anything yet. What I will do, and if you do the same tonight, what I'm going to do is I'll prepare the grant applications. I'll prepare a resolution for you to commit that $5,000 match as well as some other things, some assurances that the program requires in that resolution. And I'll work with Danielle to get that put together if you guys so choose to move forward. So I provided Danielle with a sources and uses table to try and provide some clarity as to how this works. I'm not sure if that was shared with you. Do you have that? Otherwise, I can share my screen, and I can show it to you.
Yeah, I think we do.
Yep, that would be it. So at the top are the sources. So you can see that each of the three cities would receive $10,000 from the rural housing assessment program, which is through the Iowa Economic Development Authority. The city's contribution would be $5,000. Each city contributing $5,000. So there's a total for that portion of the program of $15,000 for each community. Then Alliant would come in with $5,000 for the total program as well. And they're not requiring that you come up with any additional funds. So the total program funds or grant funds is $35,000. Total city match of the three cities combined is $15,000 for a total project of $50,000. So then the uses, you can see down below. It's Iowa State Extensions Housing Assessment Workshops. There's zero grant funds going into that. There's two Iowa State. They're requiring $5,000, which is what your match is for each community's assessment. So a total of $15,000 would go to Iowa State Extension. For our part as MSA, it'd be $35,000. So that gives you the total of $50,000. And nothing's guaranteed. These are grant applications, but this is how we're proposing it to be. I meet with Springville Monday night to see if they're willing to move forward. And if they are, then I'll start working on their grant application as well. Alliant, we don't actually have to submit a formal application. I've talked with Emily Upa from there, and she has this sources and uses table. And we've talked about what the plan is and where these sources of funds are coming from. And she is submitting that to their funding committee. And she was going to get back to me in the near future as to whether that $5,000 is going to be confirmed or not. So tonight, what I'm looking for is just a motion to approve me going ahead and submitting that grant application on your behalf. You still would have the opportunity to turn it down at a later date and even not even submit the application. What I would do is bring the application with that resolution to a future council meeting to approve it at that time for submittal. No cost for writing that. I'll need some of Danielle's time and some input from some information from the city's side of things to put into the application. But other than a little bit of her time, no cost to the city to prepare that application.
Thank you, Tim. I'll leave this to the pleasure of the council. The application deadlines or the project. I know that you're in a hurry to kind of get this done. Remember, you are asking for unbudgeted funds. So that would be my only concern. But I'll leave this to the council. We'll start from the left again with questions or comments. Councilman Menzen?
Like you said, this is unbudgeted. We're trying to build a fire station right now. Real penny pincher, if you will. And since we're building this fire station, this is not something I have any interest in at this time. That doesn't mean I won't in the future, but just at this time, no interest from me.
Sarison?
I would agree with Councilman Menzen. In addition to the fire station, I'd also say, I know we've got some residential lots pre-platted and kind of ready to go. I think we're in a different situation than Springville and Central City. So given the capital projects we have in play right now, this isn't something I'd be interested to pursue either.
Councilman Shantz?
My feeling is the same.
All right, Councilman Trump?
I'd like to pass on this project right now.
Okay, Councilman Bozenberg?
Yeah, that's my feelings, too. And I think I'd like to pass on it at this particular time.
Okay, well, from what I'm hearing here, I don't think I'm going to be calling for a motion, but I do have one more question then for Jim. Do you have any other cities committed to this yet?
Yeah, Central City committed last night.
You did, okay.
Yep, and then I meet with Springville Monday night. That was their next meeting since I found out about the new funding source. So, you know, before, we were looking at a total cost of $31,500 without this new grant, which has some additional requirements to put into the process. That's why the total cost went up, but the grant amount went up as well and reduced what the cost for each community would be. Central City, doing this on their own, was looking at $23,000 without any grants. And then when we looked at a joint application, you'd be splitting that $31,000 three ways. You know, a little over $10,000 now with the grants. Each community is only looking at $5,000. So it's a good deal, but I do understand that you guys have a lot on your plate and didn't budget for this. So, you know, if that's something that you want to pass on, that's fine, and I'll let the other communities know that.
Would you at a minimum at least drop an email to Danielle and let us know what Springville does?
Yes, absolutely.
All right, and this might be something that we can look at at a better time, so. All right, well, we do appreciate you. I do, we appreciate you bringing it to the city. Don't, it's a no now, but don't think it's a no never if you have another project.
Sure, not a problem. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Okay, our next item is the Gulf Road First Edition. This is the final flat review for approval. I believe this is one of these items that are there with our two-mile radius city, so they require approval. Guide, you have for the comments on this?
Yeah, it's a long way from city limits. It's nearly mile and a half driving from town. I don't feel like it would be a conflict for anything we might do in the foreseeable future.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments or anything on the approval for this first edition flat review for approval?
I'd like to make a comment.
Go ahead, sir.
I looked this up on Google Maps. It's already an existing building site out there. They must just need the subdivision. I don't know why, but it's really not going to affect us.
I have no issue with it than anyone else. Any issues here? Okay, I think we're up to, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry. Yeah, I think we're up to Councilman Bozenberg for the motion. Resolution 0420202, a resolution approving the flat in your packets. If you have any questions about it, could I get a motion from Councilman Bozenberg?[1688.26]
I so move him.
And a second from Councilman Menson?
Second.
Uh, I don't think. Is there any other discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose no. The motion carries. Go ahead and get that filed for us, guy. Okay, very good. All right, then we'll move on to item, or item F, which is discuss the rocking project at the lagoon. This is something we looked at before. I think it's funded, but I'll leave that to Guy and Councilman Shance. We'll go ahead and recognize Public Works for this.
Yeah, we got two estimates from Handley Dirtwork last summer. One was to rock from the highway up to the lagoons, which we did do. This project is to put rock from where the driveway meets the, the lagoon number three, which is the farthest west lagoon, in order to have a rock driveway to follow around to get to the structures where I have to regulate the outflow from the lagoons and get the samples. There's no way to get there on rock. We're driving on sod. The last couple of years, we've torn up the top of that, top of that structure a little bit, driving in muddy conditions. So, and this year we actually have some reasonably dry conditions. It'd be a great time to get it done and, and eliminate that problem from the future. So Jeremy updated his quote from last summer reflecting some new rock prices. I think you have it in your packet. I believe we can get it done for a little less than this. He's got a total of fifty nine thirty and twenty cents. I believe that I can manage to get the grading done myself and take that part of it out of the equation. But there, the quantity of rock would make it impossible for me to haul it myself effectively with the city dump truck. So the cost of rock and trucking and a little help spreading it because we have to, we cancel up the trucks to get the rock spread. So that's, that's where the, most of the number come, comes from, but I can definitely have it ready for him. I, I'm recommending yes that we do this.
Asking for an exact dollar amount or are you seeking up to?
I'd say an up to that fifty nine thirty twenty.
How about just six thousand if you don't spend it?
Yes, that's fine. Six thousand.
Okay, I'll go from right to left. Questions or comments on this? Councilman Bozenberg?
Um, no, I don't think so. No.
Councilman Trump?
No questions.
Councilman Shance, and also, can you confirm that we are budgeted for this or not?
Even if we're now, we still should do it. We have no money in that account.
Okay, very good. Any, any other questions just around this?
No.
All right, Councilperson Saracen?
No questions.
And Councilman Menson?
Welcome.
It doesn't sound like there's an issue here, so we'll go ahead and move to a motion for this. Could I get a motion for approval to do the lagoon work for a cost up to six thousand under the project management of Public Works from Councilman? I think it's so moved.
I'll move that.
Okay, so moved by Councilman Saracen. Can I get a second from Councilman Shance?
I get it.
All right, very good. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose no. The motion carries. All right, very good. In Zoom, silence means consent. No, kidding, but I, I think, I think I heard it from Menson. Did you, that was an aye from you, wasn't it, Councilman Menson?
I didn't hear it. I didn't say anything.
That was, you froze on my screen. That's why I said that. You were an aye on that last motion to approve the project?
Correct.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right. That can completes the new business. Oh, I'm sorry. We have one more item to complete the new business. It'll be item G, which is professional summer part-time position. They'll recognize the Public Works Director.
It's getting just about time to start mowing. Could use some help. I have had some interest from some upper high school age students wondering if I can get permission to post for a part-time seasonal mowing position. I feel like that'll give us some time to come up with a better strategy for the following winter as far as pushing snow. At least this way we'll have some labor available to keep up with the mowing and all the other projects. And also considering the COVID nineteen situation, we can come up with a strategy to keep that part-time person out of City Hall since Danielle and I are in here. We can do some isolation, maybe have that person report to the city shop and, and only work from that location. As far as introducing a new person into City Hall, we can probably avoid that. But the timing is probably right to get someone hired and get them trained so they can get going on the mowing.
So this is a hire situation. You're just seeking approval at the process?
Yeah, we need to post. We have.
Pleasure to counsel left to right. Councilman Menson?
Uh, yeah, I'm on board.
Yep, sounds good to me.
Councilman Shance?
I would make.
Councilman Trump?
Uh, yes, we should do this.
And Councilman Bozenberg?
Yep, yep, sounds good.
Since it's hiring, we'll go ahead and do a motion on it. Could I get a motion from Councilman Trump?
I move that we hire, allow Guy to post the position of a part-time, for a part-time summer position.
Okay, a second by Councilman Bozenberg?
I second that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries. You go ahead and start that. Danielle will assist with them. All right, very good. All right, we'll move on to our last item, which is the fire station project update. I'm going to turn this over to Guy. He's the project manager for the city. And then we'll, you're kind of comfortable for you to do that. I would say that I do try to check on that. Go down and go through the process. I'm very happy with what's going on out there. We're tracking the project internally as, as we go through it and we'll work through any issues that may come up as, as we go through there. But overall, I think it's a positive thing. I'm glad that signage is up. It allows the, the public to see what the fire station is going to look like. And I think it's, it's showing the progress as promised that myself and this council admitted to when we, when we said we were going to build a fire station. So long time coming. I'll go ahead and go over to Guy.
Absolutely. I feel like everything's been going well. The, the excavating company has been great to work with. They're really looking out for our best interest as they work. We did discover a, a field tile that's running underneath where the new building will sit that will have to be removed and rerouted. Could possibly be a change order. That was not anticipated or put into the bid. I'm not sure how it was missed. The tile is daylighted down near the road ditch. But anyway, we've located it. We know where it runs. We're developing a plan to get it rerouted, which might have a double benefit of allowing a couple of residents on Longworth Avenue to put their sump water into that tile, which will help keep that area dry and, and flowing better. The other issue that we need to work through starting tomorrow is MGA designed the pad for the building without the use of any rock as an underlayment for the concrete. I think that was done, that was their portion. I think they don't know the background of Alvernet soils. They have built the pad with clay currently. We're going to assess that clay pad. And if the clay pad is sufficient, we can go ahead. If it is not sufficient, we may have to remove some of the clay and, and add back in a few inches of rock. Could be five to ten thousand dollars as a change order, probably closer to five than ten. So that's kind of up in the air until we get some compaction tests and, and see if that's going to support our building. We want to be careful about not having a poor base under our building. So other than that, everything's been going great. The contractor's been more than willing to work with me. What I, how I would like the, the filter and topsoil moved around the property and, and put into position for anything else that we might do there. So other than that, I have nothing to report.
All right, I do apologize. I thought I'd seen the fire chief drop off, but I see he's back on my screen now. I just didn't have it correctly. Chief Graham, do you have any comment?
No, I don't.
Very good. Danielle, any comments on the fire station? All right, then we'll hear from left to right. Councilman Menson?
Guy, are you doing a proof roll or are you having them? You know what I mean?
Yeah, we're going to proof roll probably. We're going to discuss that in the morning. Ryan from MSA will be there in the morning. We're going to take a look. The, the excavator will not be there till Monday. We'll have a plan to move forward tomorrow to determine what we're going to do on, on Monday. Whether we'll probably proof roll it yes and then go from there.
Text me tomorrow when you do that. I'm off work.
Okay.
I'll stop over.
I can just say that I've got eye line to the site and they've been doing a great job, very diligent work. Happy to see it started. Guy, I appreciate the time you're spending out there and keeping that project moving.
Thank you. Councilman Shance?
No comment this time.
Councilman Trump?
No comment.
And Councilman Bozenberg?
I'd just like to comment, I'd like to thank all the council members for getting this thing going. And you, Charlie, for, you know, we've been trying to do this for years. So glad to see it's off and going and you guys got around to, you know, I come in on the last part of it. So glad to see it's going.
Well, glad to have you a part of it. It's a, it's a nice project and hopefully by this fall, if everything goes well, we'll have it, we'll have it complete. Knowing that, maybe we can actually all get together and stand next to each other to do the ribbon cutting. I hope so. Thank you. Okay, any, any other comments on this for the fire station? I completes all the old business. That's, that's all I have again. I, I will hear final comments from everybody. I know it's kind of a, an odd type of meeting for us. And I, we may be doing them yet, so we'll have to determine that as we go. I do want to thank Councilperson Saracen for setting this up. It's, I think it's gone well anyway. I'm sure she'll get this posted to the public and then on. Have an opportunity to look at it there as well, so. But again, I somewhat apologize to the public for the format that it's in because we're not sure that all our stuff is as transparent as possible and that the public has full access to everything. So they understand why we're doing it this way. I'm sure that they do. It's for the protection of everybody, so. Any other comments from anyone?
Stay safe.
Yes, Danielle? We're good? All right, Guy? Okay, then I'm going to go ahead and ask for a motion to. I thought there was a comment. Okay, all right, then we'll go ahead and in the meeting, could I get a motion, please, from anyone?
So move.
Motion.
By Menson? Second by, I think it was Bozenberg. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Be safe, everybody.
Yes.